Hey Bill, you all set? Give us about 30 seconds.
I need my chair.
You okay?
Yeah. I have one too many.
We're gonna move you to the top of the agenda. You're a party of one this evening. Good evening and welcome to the June 26th meeting of the Personnel Committee of the Lawrence City Council. I'm joined this evening by Councilor Ortiz, Councilor Vasquez, and Councilor De Peña. I'm Dave Abdu and I would ask that everyone stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is with the God of the United States of America and to the Republic of America. What we should stand is our devotion to the Lord, to the principle of justice for all.
Good evening once again. We have one new agenda item this evening and that is item number 249-17, the appointment of Vilma Martinez Dominguez to the position of Community Development Director. With that said, and this being the only item this evening, I would ask that Mr. Bonet come forward. Tell us why we're here this evening and set the table.
Good evening, Frank Bonet, Personal Director, 33 Dartmouth Street, Lawrence, Mass. Just a few introductory information that I usually give when an individual is appointed by the mayor and confirmed by council. Start out by 20 applicants applied for a position that was posted back in August 2nd, 2016. It's a grade eight position, non-union exempt, salary range between $85,000 and $95,000 annually. The position was posted and advertised on the following websites, the city of Lawrence website, City and Lawrence Public Schools email blast, that's about 4,000 users, City's Twitter account with 1,300 users, retreated by the mayor, over 3,000 followers on that, my personal LinkedIn account, Department of Training and Development Job Bank, which is Valley Works, Lawrence Community Works, MMA Mass Municipal Association, Mayor Mac Valia Chamber, and throughout nonprofits in and around the city of Lawrence. Interviews, I'm sorry, the mayor appointed Vilma Martinez Dominguez to the position of CD Director, continued upon council approval on June 8, 2017. In your packets, you should have received that selection memo as well as a letter from the Office of Planning and Development, Office of Planning and Development Director Teresa Park. And there was a committee that met to interview the candidates. That committee consisted of Ms. Teresa Park, Planning Director, Susan Fink, Acting Community Development Director, Jessica Andores, which is LCW Director, Lawrence Community Works, and Anna Luna Arlington Community Trabajando Director. They met on May 25th to interview two individuals and the individual before you appointed by the mayor is the chosen individual. I'm here to answer any questions associated with the process. Ms. Parks is here to answer any questions associated with the interviewing committee.
Thank you, Mr. Bonet.
Thank you.
Are there any questions of Mr. Bonet at this time? Hearing none. I would ask Ms. Laura to come forward. I'm sorry.
I did the same thing.
I read the email. Ms. Martinez Dominguez, my apologies.
That's okay.
If you, if you would, please tell us why you're here this evening. There is no right answer, no wrong answer, but we've read all the materials now, tell us why you're here this evening.
So, good evening and thank you very much, really to the city of Lawrence and the mayor for giving me this opportunity. I'm here because I expressed interest in the position of Community Development Director about probably three months ago. I just, I saw the position posted. It didn't sink in for a while and then I realized, I mean, really a lot of the work that I've been doing through my previous, you know, life at the YW, which I'm still there, doing social justice and health equity work, and then the work that I've done with the mayor's whole task force really within the Office of Planning and Development, that a lot of the work that I've been doing really contributes or it's really regarded as community development work. The work we've done around policies and system changes, around parks, around the complete streets policy, which was adopted about a year and a half ago, which actually led to additional funding to the city, work around health and really looking at root causes of a lot of the issues around our city. Being a resident here for 24 years, I'm a homeowner. I have raised my two, three children in our city. Actually, my daughter, who's the oldest, finished her degree and returned to the city to work for a while. So I have a deep, deep roots. I am, I've been in this community for a long time. I've seen firsthand a lot of the issues that we see as a community. I've done a lot of programming work and even though program work is good, program activities are great, they support community development overall, it's really learning more about how the root causes of things. I mean, really looking at what are the policies that we have in place that sustain, makes it easier for our community residents to live a good life and really improve the quality of life of our residents. So I think that it has been really moving from the program perspective to more the bigger picture perspective and understanding how all the different departments and all different sectors of our community sort of have to come together to make that happen. So I think that it's been the reason why. I think it's a great opportunity for me to do a lot of the work that I've done around racial justice and equity work at a larger scale. So this, to me, became a good opportunity for me to continue to grow and provide more, you know, give more back to my community, which I love, I love and adore, so. I don't know if that answers your question.
Thank you. Are there questions of the candidate? President Vasquez?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Martinez Dominguez, respectfully, I will have to say that your interview actually has not started today. It has been a long process for you. You have been interviewed in our community by residents multiple times through the roles that you've played, the different hats that you've worn, and I appreciate you taking, you know, the next step and saying, "I wish to be the Director for the Community Development Department." So thank you for that. Now, with that said, what are certain challenges that you see that have not been addressed that as the new director, if appointed and selected by the council in two weeks? What will you do differently? What are certain things that are not being done within the Community Development Department that should have been already addressed?
I think that we have been looking at community development a lot through the lens of housing and housing is an important part of our community. I mean, we have a lot of issues. We have a very densely populated community where housing and housing needs sort of tend to rise to the top and that, those need to be validated. But I think really looking at other aspects, looking at really how can we better work across departments? It's one of the things that I would love to see and do differently. One of our grants, for instance, through the Department of Public Health, which is our Mass Emotion Grant, it's one that really opened up my eyes to how can you make any changes in a community and help develop a community without the support, let's say, of the planning department, without the support of the zoning, you know, that land user, let's say, without the support of the inspectional services, without public health, without border health. DPW has become really one of the key departments that we work with when it comes to parks as we work our efforts to develop an adoptive park program that can help support some of the maintenance and support our city and really attract, you know, keep our city clean and our parks. That's just an example of one of the many things that I've noticed and you cannot do work, we cannot continue to work in silos and we've done a lot of great work to start sort of merging some of these departments and working more closely together, but fully understanding what each department does and how can we sort of build from that and maximize our capacity from that point of view. So I think that's one of the things. Really, I think the Robert Wood Johnson Culture of Health Prize was another aha moment. You really can't improve the health of our community if you're not looking at economic development, if you're not looking at employment opportunities, if you're not looking at what is the demographic, what is the makeup, who is in our community? We have a lot of youth. What are we doing around youth leadership and youth job opportunities and internship? All of that is community development. So really, it's looking at it at a broader sort of definition of health and a broader definition of community development, we really need to do that because otherwise it's not gonna work. I mean, we can produce a lot of housing and I see that there's a lot of housing development, but affordability continues to be an issue. And so if we're not looking at our income and how can we improve the income of our community residents, then we're not gonna be able to address, sort of match, sort of the housing, the housing that we have, the housing that needs to be developed, and also the income of the families. Because if you don't have a good income and if you're spending more than 40% of your income on housing, that leaves very little monies for health, that leaves very little money for eating healthy, that leaves very little money for so many things. And so you cannot look at community development just through the lens of housing, even though it is one of the major projects. We have a very old housing stock and I know that led, and there's other issues that we need to look at, which directly impact health, which directly have something to do with the border health because they do a lot of the policy around that. I mean, you really need to have a broader sort of perspective on community development. And I think that that's a little bit of a different aspect that will be brought if I was to be appointed, well, actually confirmed to this position. The other thing is that I'm a Lawrence resident. I've been here 24 years. I care, I live for my city and I've seen, I mean, I've done a lot of work around community violence, domestic violence, I've done a lot of work around inequities, around health insurance enrollment and access. I mean, I have sort of all that reach background that I bring to the table that probably it's not just housing, but it's gonna sort of contribute to look at things differently, so.
If I had to ask you, and I think this will be challenging for you, given the scope of work you've done before, but if you had to tell us one thing that you've done that you feel very, very proud of accomplishing for the city of Lawrence, what would it be and why?
I think one of the things that I'm very proud of, there's many that I'm very proud of, but I think one of the first things that I did when I first became a coordinator for the mayor's whole task force is really to integrate domestic violence and sexual assault and women's issues into a lot of the work that the task force was doing. And so we began to do a lot of the March of the Brides, we began to do a lot of the awareness raising campaigns, and I think that has been a little bit different and has helped build relationships that are, go above and beyond my work at the YWCA. That's one. I think that the adoption of the salsa campaign, supporting active lifestyles for all, the Healthy Active Living Resolution, and really that plan that was presented that now includes the Ciclovia, that includes the salsa festival, it includes promoting and supporting a lot of the community gardens and the farmer's market that is already happening, and doing some of the work on activating parks and open spaces. Such a vast campaign and it's so involved and involves so many people and partners. I think that's the other thing that I'm very proud of. The work around the adoption of the complete streets, we had to do a lot of trainings, we had to go to the state. We did a lot of work and I had to really work alongside the planning department to do that, to become, you know, to get this policy adopted, which opened doors for other sources of funding, which is now the pedestrian improvement project that's happening at the Weatherby, what's with some of the funding for complete streets grants. So that's just some of the examples. I think that the bodega project, the Healthy on the Block, it's something that we have been thinking and talking about for years. I mean, since we had a reach grant, you know, a federal grant with a clinic, talking about 15 years at least. And we always thought, you know, why can this work? The bodega project has worked in other places. It's a lot easier to support the local small businesses and build them, you know, their capacity and provide opportunities and to bring another supermarket to the city. It just doesn't make sense. Small businesses have been supporting our local economy for a long time and so that has been another thing that I'm really proud of. But the Lawrence Youth Council, I have to say, the Lawrence Youth Council that we started three years ago, it's now in its third cohort. We have about 10, 15 youth who are training leadership skills with a social justice lens and we just had five of them go, we supported and funded five of them to go to the US Department of Education to present on the, in the findings or on surveys. They surveyed over 600 youth in our city around the issue of education and their concerns around education and presented a bill of rights to the Department of Education. I mean, you can, it depends on what lens. I think I have been able to do what the task force has allowed us to do, is really look at health equities, but also be so broad in our reach and our thinking, giving us the opportunity to be more forward-thinking than when you get a grant and you sort of like, I'm really happy that we didn't get funded, that Coalition didn't get funding at the beginning because it gave us the ability to sort of recreate it and sort of shape it the way we want it. The most proudest thing I have, I have to say, the ability to negotiate $2.5 million coming to the city of Lawrence and through the mayor's whole task force to do a lot of the strategic planning that we're doing to prepare the task for the next year, but also supporting like the creation of a new position for the homelessness initiatives coordinator. That was all negotiated with Jim Barnes when he was the CD Director. So just the fact that we negotiated that amount of money for the city, I think that that was one of the things that I'm most proud of.
Wonderful. And I know that you've addressed a lot, money, finances. Understanding the finances of the city of Lawrence and where we stand today financially speaking, how do you see you as the Director bringing in additional sources of revenue or, you know, identify new sources of revenue in addition to the grants that we're getting to be able to implement some of the programs that you wish to implement?
I think I have established so many connections through this role, statewide, you know, regional, even national, particularly, I mean, just with the Robert Wood Johnson is a good example of the connections that we have established and have allowed us access not only to other funding opportunities, but best practices. The reputation that we have been able to leverage with the mayor's whole task force and the work that we've done, I think that and all the partnership that I have built over my 24-year career in our city and beyond the walls, I think that you have to have that and also, I love to be sitting at different tables and I think that's important because it gives you perspective, different perspective, and also opens up your eyes for potential partnerships and potential opportunities. I mean, I'm talking about, we didn't even have a grant writer in our department and now we have a team of two people, resource development team, that are helping us not only for the task, but because health is in all policies with other opportunities that help promote sort of the, not only the health, but wellness of our community, for the quality of life. So I think that's gonna be the other thing. I sit at a lot of tables that have, make a lot of decisions around policies that impact our community and I think that and our partnerships and our collaborations and in different departments are gonna help us sort of position us in a different way too.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez Dominguez. Mr. Chair, through you, I have to say that when I saw her name listed on the city council agenda for the first time, I was really excited. And I say that because you have been interviewed multiple times without you even realizing it. I personally think that you are qualified for this position and I will be supporting you not only at this level, but at the city council, full council level as well, because I believe in the work that you've been doing and I know that your passion is there to get the work done. You came with my support and I was extremely excited, Mr. Chair, when her name was listed on our agenda. I don't have any further questions and I wish you the best tonight.
Thank you. It means a lot. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Other councilors? Questions?
I don't have questions.
For her?
Councilor De Peña?
No, I don't have questions for her.
Okay.
I know.
Laura's yes.
I know for a long time, the lady, she's, everything she did in the community, in my community, doing good job, putting her heart for everything she did, I support 100%.
Thank you.
I know you.
Thank you.
You?
Councilor Ortiz.
Thank you so much for being here this evening and coming before us and explaining all over again all the, all the things that you do and making it relevant to this position. I had many questions when I saw your name on the agenda and so I went right to work. I went right to work asking the right people the right questions and I'm here comfortable seeing a very qualified candidate before me. I think that you've done an eloquent job in explaining to us and to the public that's watching right now live, in addition to on television, how your experience in the mayor's health task force is bridged now into community development and it's almost one in the same in some respects. Being able to see that and how it fit together and how it's been interwebbed this whole entire time gives me great pride in seeing someone from the community and from my district and someone that we all call friends and I call a partner in parenting. So I'm thankful for that and I don't have any questions because I've already asked all, Frank and me spent hours together, the Chief of Staff and me spent some time together and went through everything that I needed to read on the comments of everyone that was on the committee to be sure that when we, sometimes when we, we cry for somebody homegrown and then right away when we get somebody from home, it's always met with scrutiny and you are above reproach standing in front of us today.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Councilor Ortiz. I would also submit for the record that two letters of support have come in, which I believe have gone to the council secretary as well as every member of the council on behalf of the candidate and I would note in particular that one was received by one of her references and that was the former Director of Community Development, Jim Barnes. Speaking as one voice at this table, my piece of it is that I sat on this council a decade ago, talking to Mr. Barnes as a former colleague. We were both feds, we both worked together on homelessness issues and after 37 years, I couldn't believe he was retiring from his job, only to find out a few days later that he was applying for this job and what a gift it was for the city because at the time, we had many issues with HUD and reporting requirements for our grants. So that's a long-winded way to say that he submitted a very nice letter on your behalf, as did Ms. Jess Andores from Lawrence Community Works. So I would submit those for the record, both electronically and also note it for the records. In Mr. Barnes's comments, he addressed specifically any concerns we may have regarding the HUD requirements. Do you have any concerns, you know, whenever you go for a job interview, they always say, "Okay, you've told us what your strengths are, now tell us about your weaknesses." Do you see the HUD requirements as a weakness for you as far as the reporting on the grants and whatnot and tell us a little bit about your thoughts on that? Because he sure did and it was positive.
No, I have to report for different grants right now. I mean, one of the most complex ones that we have to report for is for the Department of Public Health and that's the Mass Emotion Grant, which is very particular. You have to create a very detailed work plan. I mean, they're very, I mean, they're high maintenance when it comes to reporting and I've been doing reports for a long time. I'm familiar with qualitative reports, with quantitative reports. I've done reports for foundations, some of them let you write for, you know, hours on end, others just give you a small space. I'm not, I'm not, that's not a part, I know that I need to, that's gonna be a bit of a learning curve, but I used to be a housing advocate. I used to be a housing advocate at the YWCA for three years when the single-room occupancy was being built. I was there. I was the person who opened it. I was the person who actually interviewed and brought people on board. I worked alongside the Lawrence Housing Authority. At one point, we had a revolving loan as well, but we were trying to help the women that were living in the transitional housing program build their credit and that was done with CDVG funds. I've done that. I've been working alongside the team at the Office of Planning and Development and I meet monthly and so I may not be completely vested in every single project because I didn't have to at that point, but I do know and understand HUD and HUD can be quite strenuous. But I also have, there's also a great team that has been there for a long time, that have a lot of knowledge, that just because I am the Director doesn't mean that, you know, I cannot learn from them. I have a lot to learn from them and then from me, so I don't, I don't go in there with that kind of a preconceived idea that I'm not a know-it-all. I need to depend on a team to get the job done, but I'm not afraid of housing requirements. Everything is learned, so.
Well, I do know that, you know, your work in health, I had the opportunity to sit with you a few years back with the Regional Director of Health and Human Services. I'm familiar with Ciclovia and salsa and all the other good things that you do through the mayor's health task force and just like Councilor De Peña said, I know you from the community and I would agree with Councilor Vasquez that you have been on quite a lengthy interview process publicly. I don't know if I'm supposed to say this or get myself in trouble, but I shared with Councilor Ortiz in the back that I've known you professionally.
Yes.
It's a small city and, you know, we didn't go to high school together or drink beers together and the only way I knew you was through your job. And it has felt like quite a long interview and a positive one and I for one, and I think I hear agreement, that the transition between public health requirements, state requirements, and the same type of reporting that'll be required by HUD is not, it's apples and apples, it's just what kind of apple, right? So I'm comfortable with that and again, that letter from Director Barnes was just affirmation. I felt strong, like Councilor Ortiz had mentioned, coming into this, did my homework. But we got that letter today and it was affirmation for something, you know, before we came out tonight to see a familiar face and ask questions and it's a big position. There's a lot of development to go in our community and, you know, whether it's the planning department or economic development, not easy. You strike me based on the fact that I see you mostly on weekends nights and during the day that you're 24/7, 365 person and that you're always on, if you will. So as you know, being a Lawrence candidate for a Lawrence job, that is job one or requirement one for working in this city because it's not a seven-and-a-half-hour workday, five days a week, so.
Just so you know, I don't work seven-and-a-half-hour days as it is, so I'm used to it.
I believe that's the minimum requirement, right, Mr. Bonet? So, I don't, I don't think we worry about you meeting the minimum requirement of the job whatsoever. So, with that said, thank you for applying and I look forward to this vote myself.
I would like to make a motion.
Councilor Ortiz.
I would like to send up Vilma Martinez Dominguez up to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Second. There's a motion and a second. It's a discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it unanimously. Your name will go up to the full council, which will be meeting again on Tuesday, July 11th, not the 4th. You can come on the 4th, but that's one of those 365 days you shouldn't be working. And we'll be here a week later, right, Mr. President? That is right. All right. So we'll be back at that time.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Best wishes.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
There's a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
A second by Mr. De Peña. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you and good evening.
Can you hear me now? Good evening, tonight it's June twenty-sixth, two thousand and seventeen, and this is the Housing Committee meeting. Today we have a small agenda, we have two items that the Assets Officer from the Planning Department is not here today, tonight. So can I get a motion, starting with item one sixty-three oh nine, disposition on twenty-seven Benidorm Street? Can I get a motion to table, she wasn't able to make it tonight, can I get a motion to table, item one sixty-three oh nine?
Motion to table.
Not yet, is this, Mr. Chairman, may, may I speak on this?
Sure, of course.
Is this just to declare a surplus, or we're just, we're to post disposing?
Disposition.
Okay, I, I'll second the motion.
Both of the items on disposition. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. It's the same, the same situation with, with item three thirty-six sixteen, is a disposition for the thirty-nine Benidorm Street. Same situation lies from the Planning Department, wasn't able to be here tonight. Councilors, wanna discuss it or table?
Motion to table, three thirty-six sixteen. Do a discussion, associate discussion.
So, did they already find somebody, or we just?
Yes, they do have, I believe they do have somebody. The person that wasn't able to, that was, that is on the paper to actually do the disposition didn't, couldn't make it either. And that's why, once I, I spoke with her, we decided to go ahead and table the items if possible, if you guys want to, if you guys, if the councilists want to. Otherwise, we can discuss it and do something at the council, at the full council level as well.
We can wait right here, I'll second the motion to table.
All right, there is a motion on the table, probably second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. We also have another item, which we've been dealing with for a while, this is item one fifty-two seventeen. This is a covenant place on a parcel of land, thirty-four thirty-six, Bork Street, is requested removal. We have a representation from the Planning Department tonight, and we also have the applicant or the person that is gonna either benefit or affect this item, John Tashin. Councilors, there is a lot of information about this particular item, one fifty-two seventeen. We would like to speak on this, on this item more. You guys want to give the, the floor to Democrat that, that is here to discuss and give us an advice about this?
Mr. Chairman, our recommendation is that you open the floor up to the city so that the city can make its presentation as to, or to the applicant, which other, but I, I encourage you to open it to the floor first.
Yes, then, do you have any, any comment on this, please, Democrat from the Planning Department?
Sure.
Sure. We would like to get an overview about, about this in terms of your professional opinion and also what the city thinks about this, and then we can open the floor to the applicant as well.
Okay, well, Daniel McCarthy, I'm the City's Land Use Planner, I have offices at two-twenty-five Essex Street, and I'm here at the request of the, of the Committee to go over some of the paperwork I, I brought. So I gave you a pack of twenty-six documents, and essentially what I did was a title search, looking back to the period of nineteen, the early nineteen nineties, when its properties, the two properties in question, were sold and developed, and, and how these came about. I've been the City Land Use Planner for, for eleven years. We have a program of selling properties called the yard sale, which, which sells lots of this nature. But this predates my years with the Planning Department, and it predates the land use, that, that program. So the, the history of the property originally starts with the adjoining lot, where an undersized lot was, got a, was permitted, and a lot, and a, and a two-family home was built on it. And a number of years later, there is a, that house was sold in an auction and purchased by one of the, a member of the Tashi family. Sometime after that, the vacant lot next door became available, became city-owned, and another member of the Tashi family, a different member, purchased that separately. So there was, so there's a question about, on ownership. Unfortunately, I think both the members passed away in an untimely manner, and there was another related brother who was involved as well. So there's a question of whether these properties ever merged under the term, under the, the legal principle of merger. And my, by looking at the timelines, my, my guess is that they never did merge. So then a part of the, so the, I guess, so the other question then becomes, well, what is, what of this covenant that's in the document, the city, you'll see there's two deeds, one to Mr. John Tashi, who's here tonight, and that was, I think that was a settlement of an estate, I believe? And, and, and the other one I have, that originally was a source of title to the Tashi family, is from the city to Mr. James Tashi, and selling the lot, and in it, a covenant was, was put in it, placed in it, that was to be used for the purposes of yard for the home at twenty-eight thirty Bork Street, I believe it is. That lot, that vacant lot had no address at the time, we're calling it thirty-two thirty-four just for means of identifi- identification. So the purchase was done subsequent to the construction of the house. When we do yard sales now, they're usually, they're done with the purpose of joining, joining them, and we put as part of the covenants, a condition that a Form A and R merger plan has to be recorded with the city of, the registry of deeds. The purposes of that is to make sure the properties do get merged and are protected. So the question on this, so there's a question on the condition that's on this land, and whether or not that condition is, is void, or whether it is a reasonable condition. My, my opinion is, it's, it's not, it's not a condition that runs with the, with the property at twenty-eight thirty, so that this board could, and it's, this committee could recommend, and the council could vote it away, or could keep it in, could keep it in stand, so I, I think that's an option. I think, I don't have a, an opinion, subjectively, about what's the best course of use of the land. I think that's a determination that the council has to make and the city has to make. So those are, those are my points on it, and I'll answer any questions you might have.
All right, so essentially, what we have here, we have two different lots. Was, one was, was purchased in nineteen ninety-one by, by one of the member of Tashi family for about sixty-four thousand five hundred dollars. And the other one, which was gonna serve as as green space or yard, a yard, basically the backyard of this property, and it was all for two thousand eighty-one dollars, right? This is what we're dealing with.
Is what's that? That's correct, that appears.
Councilors, there is any question from, from you to the Democrat?
I had a couple of questions, Mr. Chairman.
Sure, go ahead.
So small lot was purchased, there was a house on it, smaller lot was purchased from the city of Lawrence, and the covenant stated that that was only to be, that there was no building supposed to be on there, it's supposed to be simply green space. How long typically does those conditions run? How long, in perpetuity? Is there a limit, time limit?
The only timeline that I'm aware of, and is, is a general one, is, is the rule against perpetuities, which is so long, I don't wanna say how long ago I was in law school, but it was a long, long time ago. And it typically says that you can't have a restrictive covenant on a piece of land that doesn't allow development, that doesn't end within a period less than a hundred years. So I guess, so a question could be, which is one of the reasons why the Planning Department for the last ten years has required that these lands merge through an A and R plan. The other idea is, if they, if they did merge by common ownership, that would be enough to override, and the, and the properties would be considered mergers, and they'd have to be subdivided. I can't from the record prove, or it doesn't appear that they have merged. And there was, in the, you know, there was never a request that the plant, that the properties be merged together as a covenant of the city. It's just a covenant that says that one lot is to be used for yard and green space for the other lot, and they're both purchased separately, there are separate, I believe, at the time, the house was co-owned by James and Steve and Tashi, but the vacant lot was purchased only by James Tashi. So because of the fact that there's two people on the house deed, they wouldn't merge as a matter of law. So that is the legal principle we're talking about, it's, I, I can't say with specificity if that's, if I'm correct, but that's my general understanding of the law, is that the covenant on there is still, it's, the land is not, the lands have never been formally merged, so the covenants-
Could this have been cured at some point at any time prior to this, this day, where Jim Tashi, who owns a property that is restricted to only open space essentially, can't put a building on there, maybe parking perhaps, could there have been an opportunity for him to go ahead and merge, like you said, even though they're different, the other owners are different, because it's Jim and Steve on the other, Tashi on the other one, and it's just Jim on, the one owned by the, by the, the purchase from the city? Could there have been an opportunity for that merger to take place? I guess that's a question for Mr. Tashi, as to if it is, why, why didn't that take place? We wouldn't be here today if, if it did. Is my question making any sense at all, or you just can't hear me?
Yeah, I think, well, I think the, the question, I'm only looking at the, when I, when I was doing my research, I'm only looking at the registry of deeds. And there's another, there's another question dealing with the probates of three estates and the deaths of three people, which I didn't look at. So the question, you know, whether or not it ever ended up in the, in the, in a single person's hands, or was it owned by an estate, and, and the, and that person was an individual owner of property and at the same time in the air, that's a question of law that I don't know. the same time in the air, that's a question of law that I don't know. Like you said, it's a lot of, I can, I can only go by looking at the paperwork I have in front of me, and it appears that the house was owned at first by the father, and that was, and then he sold it to the, his two sons. That the other lot was purchased by James Tashi individually, and held by him. And I know, and I, and I've been friendly with the family for years, so I do know that the father and, and both brothers passed away in an untimely manner with, over the last five years. So, the dates of those, I don't know. And the question's about what happens during estates. I'm not a probate attorney, so I'm not really experienced with what happens as far as merger.
So, I guess I'm gonna cut right to the chase. I don't, we certainly could go through all the legal arguments, and we can go through all these things. I guess my question is, as a matter of what is in the best interests of the people that we represent, the residents of the city of Lawrence, what's in the residents' best interest, this restriction that was placed back in nineteen ninety-four? Is it in the best interest that we continue that restriction? Or is it in the best interest that we relax that restriction and allow this to be, to be, I guess, developed, or whatever the plans are?
Well, that's a subjective determination. I'm really not, it's outside of my authority to make that determination of that. I, you know, I think that's the council's purview, and I guess we go to public testimony to see how the neighbors feel about it, or what, in regards to that. But, again, it's property owners' rights versus, you know, to what's good for a neighborhood, is, what's the housing situation, things of that. Those are all subjective arguments that would go, and some people may feel that the housing stock in the city is inadequate, some may feel that the housing stock is sufficient, and there's no need for more housing. These are, like I said, subjective questions, I think, are more administrative than my part in this.
You have another question? Let me have a quick question, follow up with yours.
Okay.
I just wanna follow up with his question, and then we can continue. We understand this is a suggestive question, but I'm gonna repeat the question again. In terms of the best interest of that, of the people that we represent, and especially the house that this property, the empty lot that the city of Lawrence sold to James, to James Tashi, what's gonna happen to the house if a building is right next to that property?
Yeah.
In terms of safety, in terms of any other possible issue or benefits?
I understand. Yeah, again, again, looking at the house, the physical structure of the house, and the way it was built, it was built by a third-party individual. I don't know how it was permitted at the time, back in the nineties, or the late eighties. We would never allow that house to be built that way nowadays. It's sideways on the lot, which is not legal, the parking is in front of the building, which is not legal. All the setbacks are clearly inadequate, and if we, frankly, if we're looking at a lot of that size now, possibly they might let a single family be built on that, but more than likely, the boards will not let anything be built on it.
Okay, the question is the following, because we haven't, you haven't answered the question.
Mm-hmm.
What's gonna happen in terms of safety if we build another, another property right next to this one? Because we understand that the house that is, was there, that was purchased by Jim and Steve Tashi in nineteen ninety-one, wasn't not supposed to be built in the way it was. It was built in nineteen eighty-four, yes. The city of Lawrence went ahead in nineteen ninety-four, and sold a pro, an empty lot right next to that other property, to be able to mitigate the problems, probably for entrance, parking, so, so on and so off.
That's how it appears.
So, now, two thousand seventeen, we have a situation. If we build another building right next to it, what's gonna happen in terms of safety? If that house is gonna, is gonna be fine? If that house is gonna be a problem, because we're building up a new, a new, a new building right next to it? That's the question. Is that's good or bad?
Well, it's, I guess it's, if I had to make a call, I'd say it's bad, because it's, the existing house is woefully short of the city ordinance in all dimensional requirements.
So...
So, that, so, taking the other property away from it would make the, could make that a more dangerous situation.
Right, so, if we decide to go ahead and take the restriction that it was on that title back in nineteen ninety-four, and actually allow Mr. Tashi to go ahead and build a new property, it's gonna be bad for the, for the, for the house that we actually, for twenty-eight thirty Bork Street property?
From a zoning perspective, yes.
Okay. Go ahead, take the floor if you want. I got the answer.
So, my, so what is the goal of the purchase? Apparently, I can only read into it that the goal here is to, is to put a building on there, because we wouldn't be here today if there wasn't a request essentially at some point to put a building on the, on this parcel. Is that, is that accurate?
Excuse me?
So, the only reason why we're actually talking about this, we want, the request is to remove the restriction. The restriction is that you can't put a structure on this property. And I'm presuming, the reason why we're here, to take this restriction off, is so a structure can be built on the property. Is that, is that accurate?
That's correct.
Okay. And, and how big would this lot be for the, for the, for the, for the building of the property? How many square feet?
Well, the property is located in a residential two district, zoning district. Minimum lot size is seven thousand square feet, so this is less than that.
This is thirty-one oh four?
Oh, that house. I'm talking about the vacant lot.
Vacant lot, the one...
Vacant lot's six thousand and some odd feet.
Sixty-one fifty-four.
But, there's a provision that a freestanding lot that existed prior to zoning, under state law, can be, if it existed prior to the zoning ordinance, can be built upon, if it's got five thousand feet of land and fifty feet of frontage. But, I don't think there's anything, I don't think any of the numbers, I'm not sure if combining the two together, would ever get to the point where each one would have five thousand. So, the, so the other, you know, I mean, that's not really before me. I mean, if that's...
So, would it go before the zoning board if the city council were to remove the restriction, and then the owner would like to build a house on the property? Would that have to go before zoning, or to be grandfathered?
It's a building, it's a building commissioner's determination. What I expressed earlier, if the building commissioner finds that that's been a lot of public record for a period before the last zoning ordinance, that was more restrictive, then he can say it's grandfathered, and it's buildable at fifty feet of frontage, five thousand feet of land. If he says it's not, that it's, that it's an existing lot, or it's being subdivided, and that it doesn't predate the zoning ordinance, then it would be, it would go to, it'd have to go to the zoning board of appeals to get variances, to be buildable.
Right. So, no one has asked the building commissioner of their opinion until we're at this position, is that right? We can't get a preliminary finding, if you will, or opinion, prior to the sale, is that right? Or an application being submitted?
No. As far as I know, no application's been submitted, and my, my...
It can't be.
My opinion was first asked when the covenant was requested to be removed. So, whether or not the building commissioner's seen this, he's never discussed it with myself.
And all this stuff about the other house, it really is moot. I'm not sure what that has to do with this conversation. Does there, is, am I missing something? I mean, that structure's up, it's already put together, there's nothing we can do about that building, and about the parking, and the sideways, and all that stuff. That's a done deal, right?
From a zoning standpoint, it is. If those never merged, then we can never subdivide, and we can never say it's inadequate from, from your action. The fact that it was done back then, it must have been permitted at some point, I don't know how it was done, but I'm sure somebody had to sign off, whether, and I did look for records in my office, and it didn't appear that everyone before the ZBA. But, you know, that was a long time ago.
But, again, that building really, what's the impact of that building on this question? Is there any?
The impact of that building on...
The impact on the building, the building that was purchased in nineteen ninety-one for sixty-four thousand dollars, which, that's the twenty-eight thirty Bork Street?
Correct.
What impact does that sale, does that purchase, does that house, have on the question this evening about whether or not we wanna relieve this restriction?
I think from a legal standpoint, it's only informative. It's not binding, because, as I said, because of the merger rule, and because of covenants, there was never, like I said, if, if the specific intent of the, was to make that part of this, that, the yard, they should have requested that the properties merged together. I don't know, possibly it was an oversight, when the property was purchased by Mr., by James Tashi, they didn't realize that Steve Tashi was the, also on the deed to the house. I don't know any of these facts, there, none of those is before me.
Is that the argument that's being, well, we should listen to Mr. Tashi, but is that the argument that you believe Mr. Tashi is making? That, that there should be some sort of merging between the properties?
If this was done today, we would have requested it. We wouldn't have sold the property without a requirement that they merge. But, this wasn't done. That's why we do that. That's why we have a requirement that the people do an A and R, and merge, and record a D, a plan merging the two properties, so this question never comes up.
But, even if this was merged, and they wanted to build a property on, and build a structure on, on this property, it's questionable whether or not they can lawfully do it.
Correct.
Correct? So, even if, even if this was done in two thousand seventeen, and then we had an A and R, that had to be merged, et cetera, et cetera, there probably couldn't be another house built over, on that, a second house built on that property.
Right.
Am I, am I accurate in saying that?
Right, I think you're correct in the fact that there's a legal issue, but the legal issue only pertains to the vacant lot, that, and I know if a question was made about, you know, what was the intent of the covenant, and the board, and it went to a court, the court might find that the covenant was intended to protect the other property, to, in effect, to give some mitigation to the fact that that property was inadequately dimensioned. But, but the fact of the matter is, that the house construction predated, the city allowed that house to be built, and this property was built with a covenant that is to be used as yard for the benefit of that property. So, it's, so, I don't know if that's conclusive.
Don't be quiet.
It's, it doesn't say that they should become the same property, or they become one property, which would be a bit clearer. I would say, I would, you know, but again, it's a judgment call that the council needs to make.
So, my last comment is this. My last comment, I'm eager to hear what Mr. Tashi has to say. An equally interested in the audience this evening is the city council who represents that area. I'm not sure if he's prepared to speak or give his opinion one way or the other, but if he does have an opinion as to, as to this issue, I would be interested in knowing what that opinion is. See, he does represent that area.
Yeah, we eventually wanna get to that point. By the way, just point of information, the city of Lawrence, according to your statement earlier, have not record of that building being in place.
What's, can you repeat that again?
That the city of Lawrence, you didn't find any record, just, just to clarify that, you didn't find any record on twenty-eight thirty Bork Street?
Yes.
So, you did not find it?
I did not find any permitting from my department.
All right, so probably, we don't know, but probably the city of Lawrence didn't approve that building, to be built.
I, I think the city owned that property at one time, and sold it to this individual.
The empty lot, or the property?
And I, that's, I think that's what the, the deeds indicated.
Back in eighteen eighty-seven, the, the house was built by, by somebody. So, we don't know if we actually owned it, or we don't have any record on that property. That's according to your comment. I just wanna clarify that, because that might be a point for future reference.
purchased as part of, as an auction, from the end of a savings bank.
Yeah, nineteen ninety-one, but it was built, it was not...
I did not look for the, I did look in my department to see if there is any construction or records of them coming for a special permit to build a house. We have our property, our records listed by address, and there is nothing from Bork Street, this number Bork Street. I did not look in the building commissioner's office.
All right, Dr. Lawrence, do you still have any question?
So, just for, I've been trying to follow the conversation, and I vaguely remember Mr. Tashi coming here before us. What we're looking at this evening is one vacant lot, correct? Basically, what's right next door is considered one lot, 'cause I'm looking at the plans here, and it says proposed duplex, but that just means that this lot is sixty-one hundred square feet, and the proposed building would be right next door with green space in the back, is, or am I looking at three different lots?
Hmm? Is this my thoughts?
Yes.
If this was coming before the boards, what my recommendation would be? Is that what you're asking, or my thoughts on it?
Well, no, I think specific...
I mean, I mean, it looks to me the house was designed in a manner that was, it's, the frontage, it's, the front yard of the property is closer to the street than it would be under our typical dimensions. Part of the reason for that is, I think, is a topographical issue of the land, that there's a hill in the back that goes down sixteen feet. So, a portion of this, this six thousand square feet is actually a hill that, that drops down to where the industrial park is. So, I think that's why the house is so close on that plan. But, again, that's just a plan. It's not, I mean, the house could be designed in a number of different ways.
I'm, I'm just trying to get a visual in my mind to see. And the question before us is, this lot has a covenant on it, is it right?
Correct.
And that covenant says, this sixty-one hundred square feet can only be used for green space and yard.
Correct.
Right? Because of X, whatever the reason was back then.
Correct.
And now, what we're asked, what we're being asked is to say, yes, this is a buildable space, and so we'll remove the covenant.
They're asking, yeah, they're asking that the covenant be removed, and the purpose would be for building, yes.
For the purpose of building.
And I guess the argument, and I don't want to, would be that the times have changed, and it's not, no longer necessary. I mean, I, I guess the applicant could speak for themselves.
I'm sorry, can you speak into the mic? Can you say something about times changing, and then I lost you?
Yeah. I guess the, I don't know what, we've had a couple of these that were properties that had covenants on them, that were thirty or forty years old, that we have removed. Because time, conditions change, and the covenants don't seem applicable. That's part of the reason why we put the provisions in now, to merge the properties.
Right.
Because that, because that's a specific intent. We don't want twenty, thirty years from now, another city council to question why we did something. The properties get merged, and they become one lot.
Right.
Through, whether it's done purposefully, or by mistake, or it was the intent, these properties, from a legal standpoint, never did merge. I mean, that's, that's, I think it's, I don't know if that's a hundred percent accurate, but it's what appears to be from the paper record. The question is, can you remove the covenant? Yes. Do you have to remove the covenant? No.
So, what it looks like to me, and this is just my observation, is that we have a lot that was, that is thirty-one hundred square feet with the house on it.
Mm-hmm.
What I've seen in my, my short time here on the housing committee, is that the flip would be the case, where we would have a home with sixty-one hundred square feet and some yard space, and then we would sell off to the abutter, what's next door, because thirty-one hundred square feet is not buildable. So, that would be the green space.
Correct.
And that's just me trying to make sense of all of this. But, we don't have that here before us. What we have is, this unbuildable space is built, built upon. We didn't have a merging of the two lots, so it's not considered one property, correct?
Correct.
Right? And so, now we have two separate properties. And what I'm still a little bit fuzzy on is, who owns both properties? Does Mr. Tashi... Does Mr. Tashi own just one or does he own both?
I don't know, I don't know that answer.
Do you own?
I, I own one of them. I own a lot.
Can you please come up to the mic only just for the purpose of, of people hearing you?
Good evening, I'm John Tashi. My office is at 510 Sixth Street. Thank you for your time tonight for my, for me talking. Uh, no, this property is owned separately by myself. The other property was owned, the house next door was owned by my late brother Stephen and my late brother James. James predeceives Stephen. So Stephen took, has sole ownership of the house. Stephen is deceased now, so his estate owns that, owns that property. I've, I got this lot prior to Stephen passing away from my brother James' estate. Me and my brother James, prior to him passing away, were going to attempt to build on this.
Okay.
Attempt this. It's just something that I put off due to all the unfortunate circumstances that have been happening.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, the house has, it's like, again, it's 6,000 square feet is the lot, a little over. And as you're saying, most of the houses in that neighborhood are close together. As far as the other house being built without a permit or they're suggesting without a permit, I'm not sure. I mean, the house has been there for 30 years. I would, or even longer, 40 years. I would assume that at some point the city issuing occupancy permits, fire inspections would have caught something if something was built illegally. So I'm assuming there is a building permit for that building somewhere in the, in the building department's office. Right next door to this lot, to the lot I'm proposing, there is a, an 8,000 square foot lot.
Yep.
8,600 square foot lot, which, that, which they were allowed to put, they are currently putting a single family in a duplex. So square footage wise, they're putting a single family in a duplex on that, on lot, uh, 17851. It has 8,600 square feet. They're putting a single and a duplex, which is obviously, if you do the math, there's less green space available. The lot I'm proposing to get this covenant off, which I feel at the best time is the best use for the property. You know, it's, as you know, we're in a need for housing in the city. I've built a few houses in the city. And my lot's 6,100 square feet. Attorney McCarthy was speaking of too, there's a drop off in the back, which I know, that's something I would, I know I would have to go through the building department if necessary, go through the zoning department. The proper, you know, the proper steps to get, to allow this to be built. If in fact you do approve this to go forward.
Just a point of information very quick.
Thank you.
According to the plan that you have here, the drop, it's 46%.
On the back of the building?
Yeah.
Yeah, unless something like that-
You have a drop of, um, 16-foot difference between what's going to be built and what is-
I understand that I would have to, I understand that I would have to put a retain, some type of retaining wall if the city would want me to do that. And I, I would, that's something I would do and put some fill in there. If you go to the back of it now, it's abutting Glen Street. And on the hill, the land next to it is a, a total slope. And that's where the other two houses that are being built by, I'm not sure who, someone's building them there. And I understand that I may have to put some fill in there. It's facing the industrial area, is Glen Street, which is all industrial in back. So I know I would have to have an engineer and have an architect do, look at all that stuff to make sure everything was up to code.
So removing, removing the covenant allows for you to build and for this lot to be used. Cause at the moment, I was just, I'm, I'm, and I just wanted to explain to you and the people that are home, when I use my phone, I was using satellites so that I'm able to see kind of what else is around here cause the plan's in front of me. I'm, I'm not blessed with an engineer's mind like my colleague over here. So I need, you know, I need the picture to be able to see that. So this, what I see is that this is, um, consistent, what, what else is on, on the street.
Yes, if you go, if you go to the other lots abutting it, right next door to that one, there's another 60, 6,000 square foot with a duplex on it across the street. There's one with a 3,100 square feet. There's a, there's a, a house on it. If you go right down the whole row and what the city just recently approved on the lot that abuts it, to put a single family in a duplex on an 8,000 square foot lot.
Thank you, I have no further questions.
Thank you.
I would like to, Councilor Abdu, which represents this area, do you have any comment on this? Or you don't want to deal with? Thank you for being here. This is Councilor Dave Abdu representing District E.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, members of this committee. So I come here this evening, um, not in support of this, not necessarily opposing it. I come with many questions. In conversation with the neighborhood association and neighbors, there is a lot of confusion about the development that's going on that Mr. Tashi described on, um, Glen Street. Because the area is so tight, as you might have noticed on the satellite photo, that it, the, um, the confusion is understandable. I want to remind everybody that, um, a zoning board provides relief in many cases. A relief to, um, land use. And in this case, at one time, the zoning board placed a covenant on this property for whatever the reasons may have been. I would ask you, as you make your decisions this evening, and I will ask again in front of the full council, unless documents arise, that we have to ask ourselves this covenant was placed at a time when relief was being requested. And that covenant remains in place to answer a question that was asked earlier, I believe, in perpetuity. Or until this body, um, lifts that covenant from, um, further development. So as I see it, um, this dead end road, um, with a, you know, I'm not going to question the legality of the house that was built sideways. It certainly, to someone who spent 10 years as a planning board member, eight of which I was as chairman, we would never have permitted that, um, back in the late 90s, early 2000s. It's, it is what it is. I would, I would caution before we compound any issues and build on what's left of that open space with a 46% grade drop and new development going on behind it, that we proceed cautiously before we lift a covenant that was placed by the zoning board of appeals at a previous date.
Alright.
Are there any questions?
Go ahead.
I had a question. So my impression was this was, and please correct me. My impression was that this condition was placed by the city council back in that time, not by the ZBA. Can I get some clarification on that? Cause this was a property sold by the city, which had to go through the council to, to Mr. Tar, to Mr. Tashi.
Okay, I, um, stand corrected, I believe you are correct. If I was using the zoning board, um, reference, though I would, a condition that would still be respected as the council provided, not relief, but, um, access and opportunity to that parcel. I would assume that that condition, like relief that would be provided by a board, would be in perpetuity. Again, not speaking in opposition, but challenging the city before it provides more opportunity for development on an already tight area to make sure we cross our Ts and dot our Is. You know, it's, it's unfortunate, um, that Mr. Tashi's brothers have passed and fathers passed. That the parcels weren't merged and that we're here this evening with these questions. However, this is a tight area. I would ask that each of you visit it. It's a dead end. It's, um, like I said, there's construction already going on behind it on Glen Street. I don't know the circumstances of that development, but obviously it's been permitted. And I would ask you to proceed as you are, asking these questions and doing so in a thoughtful manner. It is something that I, I will close by suggesting that, um, is not necessary. But if indeed, that, you know, that's not my determine, determination that a, a house is necessary or not. But I think we have to determine if it's in the best interest of the city to lift a covenant and allow, um, development on, I believe my notes show a 6,400 acre lot next to a house that's aforementioned, is already built in an unfortunate manner. So that means that I would rest my comments and thank you for your consideration this evening.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions for Mrs. Tashi.
Yes, sir.
So you owned 2830, correct?
28, which one?
2830.
That's the how, the two family, correct?
Yes.
No, I don't own it, no.
You don't own it?
I don't own it. I never owned it. These have always been two-
Who owns this? Who owns 2830?
This right now, it's, right now, it's the estate of my brother Stephen. Passed away.
So do you, do you know that that property was sold for the only reason? Well, one of the, the reason that this property was sold to James, it was for the benefit of 2830, Bunker Street?
Yes, I understand that and that's why I'm taking, this is part of the per-
So the way that I see it is that, that, that antilad, one way or another, belonged to the, uh, 2830?
No, but it, it, it doesn't. They, although they do derive a benefit from it, there are two separate deeds. There are two separate tax bills. There are two separate, two separate owners. They've never, and as Attorney McCarthy was saying, the merger, the merger issue, it's always been a separate lot. It was bought and it does, they do only, although they do benefit, there is a benefit there put for them. The lot, but right now, it's currently fenced in, no one's using it. Back in 19, I think it's 91, what's put on there?
91.
It was put on there for that benefit. And as, there have been other lots in the city that this has been an issue with and it has, they have, the covenant has been removed. I feel now at this time, I mean, at the time, it may have been benefits to the property. But right now, it's of no benefit to the property because there is no, on paper, there's a benefit, but physically, there is no benefit.
Well, um, if, if physically it's not a benefit, the city of Lawrence, actually, the intention of the city of Lawrence back then, when it was sold, it was to benefit only and exclusively this property.
Yes, I understand that. I do understand that. And that, again, that's the reason why I'm here, to get this covenant removed. And this is the first step.
But and then, um, if we do that, they, my can, my college, they can do whatever they want. But I mean, what I'm, the way that I see it, and if, if we go ahead and eliminate that restriction, what was the point of, of that board that allowed that property to be sold for that amount of money? And, and to benefit the property? So we're taking the benefit that another, a prior board or the city council, a, a prior city council actually, uh, grant?
Again, that was over, that was over, I know 1991 was, obviously, they're over 20s, I'm sorry, my math is-
20 something?
Yeah, 27 years. And the city's landscape has changed by building, zoning laws have changed. And use of property, property uses have changed. And I feel at this time, uh, it's, I'm asking the board that at this time to use a property for what is best interest. The best use of the property would be, at this time, would be to build, build a home, add tax base to this, add more tax revenue to the city.
We understand, but I mean, uh, it, that's a good point. But I mean, if we just, um, take the intention of the, of the, of the 1991 city council, we basically saying, okay, we're just gonna-
The, it has been done-
Anything that was done before and not-
Although I don't have the addresses, I know it's, it has been done in the city for other properties. And again, I'm going to go back to the, they're allowing, I'm not sure if there was a covenant on the property next door to it, which, where they are building the single and the two family on a smaller square footage lot and double the, double the housing.
I have a, I have concern about, about the entire situation because of the, of what we're seeing today in front of us. That the intention was not to build another property there and, uh, and be able to benefit 2830, uh, Bunker Street. If that's the case right now, probably not, but sure. Uh, go ahead, Councilor Plan.
And I was just going to add this one piece. We're trying to put ourselves in the position of the 1994 city council. What I, what I haven't, I don't think any of us have done yet, is to look at the notes back in 1994.
That's exactly what I was thinking.
And the minutes and try to figure out as best we can. And I will grant you that these minutes probably aren't all that great. But at least we will get a, an inkling, a little idea. Was it unanimous? Was it controversial? Maybe we'll get a sense as to what the arguments might have been at that time to give us a flavor as what the people who are in the seats that we are sitting in now wrestled with back 23 years ago. And I think that would be helpful for us. Because there is a reason why they put this in here. And I don't know what that reason is today. I, and, and I would imagine the predecessor to Mr. Abdu probably had some strong feelings about this. This was in that individual's district. And I'm sure I'd be curious to know exactly what that person was thinking and saying when this discussion point came up. All of that goes to saying is that, that there's an important piece of information here that we don't have. I would feel more comfortable with the vote, having that bit of information. I think my colleagues at the full council level, besides ourselves, might find that to be of some utility and benefit. So, um, I, I, I don't know if we can go back. And if you gave us five minutes, I don't know if I could find those that quickly. I don't know if it's automated, if we can do that yet. I don't know.
And if you want to try, yeah, we can-
We can maybe do that or maybe it's too big and it takes a bit of an intern project to try to find that out. We do have some stuff automated, we do have records and such. We could, maybe we'll be able to do minutes automated. But anyway.
Why don't we actually request it? And have it for another meeting, probably?
We could ask the city clerk to provide for us the records of the vote back in 1994. He should at least be able to provide. But this, the larger purchase from the city of Lawrence in 94. Says here, it should be 94 that is, when it was done.
What happened in 91?
91 was a sale-
This, this small one?
From the end of a savings bank. It didn't come from the city. The city, the sale from the city came in 94.
Okay.
According to this memo. So that's the, 94 is the time we need to figure out what, what happened there.
Yes, um, you have any other question?
No, that's just a comment and I'm, I'm not sure, what kind of track you want to put this on.
I think that's, that's fair. As much information we can get, that's going to be a better, a better resolution out of this. Let me ask you a quick question. So James and your, your father and your brother used to own 2830, uh, Bunker Street, right?
My father originally purchased it at, uh, at an auction. It was later sold to James and Stephen.
So, uh, McCarthy, let me, let me ask you a quick question. It was, according to the record that you find, it was, um, purchased and an option by Jen and Steve? Or only by Steve?
2830, the property with the house on it, was sold at an auction of the end of a bank. It was purchased by, I believe, Michael Tashi, which is the father. A year or two later, he sold it to his two sons, James and Stephen.
Okay.
A, a couple of years after that, James buys the adjacent lot in his own name with a condition that'd be, with it, with that covenant in it. Then at some, at a certain point, James, uh, predeceives Stephen and that property goes into Stephen's name alone. And the other, and the rest of the, and the vacant property would have been in James's estate, correct?
So let me ask you, um, so you purchased, uh, that big lot from James?
From James's estate, correct. In 2014, I believe.
So you purchased it from him or it wasn't his estate? Okay.
It was actually, I had another piece of, I- It was actually, I had another piece of, I, I purchased another piece of land that was on, there was a piece of land that was in question. So instead of arguing about a piece of land, I was given a piece of land that's on the corner of Toby and Knox Street, which I built a duplex, built a duplex there and I was given, I was, not given, but as, as my, as my settlement, I took also this piece of land. I was given this piece of land.
So another question is like, if we have a restriction by the original owner, so the, the restriction should be respected, but anyway, that's basically what we're discussing here.
Yes.
All right, councilors, we have three different way of maybe solve this problem. What do you guys prefer and what do, we should do in terms of?
I was gonna ask to make a motion for a five-minute recess. I want, I'm just curious, I'm just, I'm just curious to see what we have back there, what kind of daunting task, if it's a quick and easy?
All right, motion to, motion to recess.
Motion made. I'll make it.
Can I second it?
All right, all those who favor please say aye.
Aye.
Guys, have it. You guys have it?
Chairman?
So we were looking into the documents, the archive document, if we couldn't find anything, but that doesn't mean that there is no, there is, there is nothing there. That means that we probably couldn't find it. Councilors, we have a situation with one of us, asking us to remove some conditions from nineteen ninety-four. I believe that we can find more records, but it's up to you, what do you prefer? You want more information, Councilor Plant?
Yeah, I wanna make a motion to, to table and to instruct the clerk, and right there yet, to instruct the clerk to, to provide for us whatever records he can find, most specifically the nineteen ninety-four records, I believe it's ninety-four, unless it was done late in ninety-three or something, ninety-three, ninety-four, for the transfer of the property from this disposition from the city to Mr. Tashi at that time. That's what I would be asking, if you could find it there as well as, full council as well as, I would presume it was the housing committee at that time. So that would be my motion and instruction to the clerk.
Discussion?
There is a second?
Second discussion?
No, there is not discussion.
Just on second, just go for it, just go-
Why can't I have a discussion?
I, well, I will do it all-
He just made a motion.
To table, you can't talk anymore.
Can't talk when you, with everyone either.
No.
All right, so we done, do you have any question in terms of, before we make the mo, before you make a motion to?
He just made the motion already.
Oh, you're not seconding it?
I'm not.
And then, okay. Go ahead.
So in regards to this matter, I'm looking at the date in which it came to us. This is May sixteenth. I'm all about doing the people's business. I think we have ample information in front of us. I know that I'm interested in that same thing that you said, well, what are, what are the minutes, what was the intent, when we're, when we're looking at, when we make legislation here and that covenant is a part of our legislation. We also don't meet until July eleventh. So that's a two, two full weeks that the clerk or whomever has to get us information and for us to get this before the full council and make the decision together. I, if, I'm of the opinion that if we wait here, we get more information, we deliberate, at the end, I've already made up my mind to send this up with no recommendation, even with more information because Mark has, I mean, sorry, Councilor Plant. Councilor Plant has said time and time again about overcrowding, about putting things where they don't belong, and what is it that we're looking at overall for, for the city and for this community? I've only visited this property, I have to say, since May sixteenth via satellite twice now, 'cause I needed to remember, and I, I do commit to doing my due diligence and going down there. I also hear Mr. Tashi when he says, well, if the city is committed to not having a certainly foot of posted stamped homes, then what is the approval that, that happened for these two homes on this lot that's smaller than the combination of the lots that I'm, I'm trying to build on? So those are the arguments that are in front of me and that's, that's where I see it. I don't, I don't think knowing, having that extra amount of information before the full council happens or at the full council is not gonna change how we, how I vote it up, which is with no recommendation.
Okay, no problem, that's-
That's just my opinion.
We respect your opinion, your entire to it. I have another question before, before we continue with the discussion. Probably to you, Councilor Abdou, do you mind coming in, please, for a second? So for how long you serve on the, on the planning?
Planning Board?
Yes.
Ten years, if not nine.
Correct.
Ten.
So when the planning or the zoning board have this type of proposal in front of them, do they request a public hearing?
We do, yes.
My question to the councilors is, there is a way that we can, because what we're doing here, it's, it's basically allowing, oh, no, before I go to that point, to you, McCarthy, do you mind standing up for a second?
Yes.
So when, when a situation like this is presented to, to the zoning board, so we already got the answer that it probably require a public hearing?
Yeah.
Correct.
Correct.
So my question is, give me one second, please. This, does this situation have to go in front of zoning, let's say perhaps if city council decide to take them, to take the conditions?
If this is gonna be reviewed as a new lot, it would have to go before the zoning board, 'cause like you said, it's a seven thousand square foot minimum for that neighborhood and this one has six thousand one hundred square feet. So we need a variance for that. Looking at the plans that are presented, we'll probably need some setback relief as well. So we need a variance for that. Looking at the plans that are presented, it would probably need some setback relief as well. So yes, it would have to go, it would require variances to be permitted to be constructed. It's not, it's not buildable by right under the zoning ordinance.
So it's not buildable by right onto the zoning?
Correct.
Laws? So if the city council decide to go ahead and, and remove those conditions, they still need to go ahead and get some variance from the zoning?
More than likely, yes.
And they're gonna require to have a public, uh, hearing for that?
Yes.
All right. All right, no more questions, thank you. So my line of thought was perhaps if we allow the, the neighbors to, to he, we allow the, uh, or we actually ask for, for a public hearing at this level or at the full council level, is that, something that, that we, we, we should do or, and this is, is legal?
This chairman, yeah, we typically don't hold public hearings on things like this. We dispose, we dispose of properties all the time, and there's no public hearing. We only have public hearings when we change the laws. This one here, I don't think is a law change. I think we're just rescinding our vote on a, on a, um, condition that we had back.
Yes, and I, and I know that, my, my question is, even though we're not changing the law, can we allow the public to be here?
If I could just for one minute, if I could just add something?
Sure, go ahead.
I understand exactly what you're saying, that the public should be, be allowed to participate, but when I do go for a variance in front of the zoning bo, uh, the land use, the zoning board, I would have to notify all the neighbors. They do get notification. I have to post it in the newspaper. So that, that aspect of it would be covered at that point, if I get past this first, the first point with the, with the council.
Yes, and my, and my, and my answer to that will be that, yes, that's at the zoning, that's at the zoning level, but us, as a city council, have to be able to understand what the public or the public from that area would like to before we remove those conditions, because those conditions were there for a reason. We don't know.
Yes.
What condition, what, the, we know the conditions, but we don't know the reason why it was there. It's probably because of the slope and on the grade, uh, between the property or the flat portion of the property and the, and downhill. Like I said before, it's about, uh, fourteen to sixteen feet down on a thirty, on a thirty, on a thirty-five feet deep, uh, 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 straight distance, which could be a reason, but we don't know. And my question is, if that's gonna be a, a condition, that we don't know if that's gonna be a, a buildable because of the actual terrain situation that we have here. The city council have a condition, uh, in place that you're asking us to remove. And my question is, should we allow the public to participate in this or not, or in that's a le, there's a legality portion of it? I'm willing to, if, if that's legal, I'm willing to listen to the, to the public, probably at this level or at the full council level. If you guys want to, if you, if your councilors want to.
I have a question.
I understand that we hold public hearings typically, or when you change the law, but we technically, I technically don't know if we are changing the law, because we actually, when we actually did the disposition back then in nineteen ninety-four, we actually create a, um, condition in, it could be called a law. I don't know, probably. But we technically changing something. And if we changing something, can we allow the public to be here?
I have a question.
Sure, go ahead.
To you. Um, did you say that the back portion is forty-six percent of the lot? Is that what you said? What did you say? Can you clarify that?
Uh, the slope between the flat area of the lot and downgrade, uh, it's forty-six percent. Basically, this is how we look. This is the, the flat area and thus this, the back section.
And so is the slope considered part of the square footage?
Yes.
So is that slope, so is it, so is?
It could be that is not sixty-four hundred square feet.
Well, that's why I'm doing the math. If, do, you know what I'm saying?
I know.
So if you're saying forty-six percent?
No, it's not forty-six percent of the lot, it's, the drop is forty-six percent.
The drop is forty-six percent.
According to my math. So it could be that, but we actually have the eighty feet required in the front, but I don't know about the parking lot on that side, but that's my opinion. So, could be a nature, it could be that, that car, the second car here will be like that. On that, a hundred and something, something, a hundred and something feet that way. So, I'm gonna raise a question again. Is that's legal to hear the public that live on that area before we remove that condition? Or you guys don't wanna go that route? Go ahead.
If the city council wishes to hold a public hearing, we could hold a public hearing on whatever we wanna do.
At the city council, though.
Sure, we can, at the full council, and we can order a public hearing on anything. All of this is cost money. You put a newspaper, ad, you vote for it, you say you wanna do it. We can order a public hearing. We're just required to have a public hearing on things that deal with ordinances, so we could have a public hearing on anything. I will also add this. There's a reason why we have district councillors, and there's a reason why we ask them to represent the people that they are there. So when we ask the district E councillor for his opinions, there's a reason why, because we expect that he is the voice of those people there. Now, he hopefully will have an opportunity to have a better feel, a better idea. He himself has also mentioned, he's been to the neighborhood association meetings, he's talked to folks there. I'm sure people have called him up or perhaps emailed him. I'm sure he's getting all that stuff. So from that perspective, he is, he is probably pretty well-versed on this. And if we hold a public hearing, we're probably gonna have people from his district come here and speaking on that. We might have a few stragglers from other parts of the city, you know, but it's probably going to be the people in that immediate area. And what Mr. Tarshi was saying is true as well, which is there's going, if, if he is gonna put a house there, it has to go before zoning. If he buys this thing and does nothing with it, I mean, he already has it, if he keeps it the way it is, there's no public hearing, but if he, but if he decides he wants to put a house there, it has to go. The others need, will, will be given notice. Again, granted, it's a second, it's an, it's a second step, as Mr. Tarshi said correctly. So I, I, I'm of the mind of two things. One is, I'm gonna take the district councillor's recommendation into consideration, as he represents it, as I would hope all of us would, I would take anybody else's, uh, district into consideration, because I expect that each one of us, especially those here, are district councillors. We are supposed to know our deal from our, the folks they represent.
So if we go by his recommendation?
Who's recommended, sorry?
By the council, District D, District E recommendation, we should send it to the full council with a negative recommendation, because he's against it?
Well, he, I, I think I heard him, I don't think he is, I think he provided some, a variety, a breadth of opinion. I don't think he came definitively one way or the other. He's, he, he kinda reserved himself, uh, as far as how he wanted to see. He made his concerns known, uh, but I, here, you can ask him himself. Here he is.
Well, I, Council, Council District E, what do you, what's your opinion again on this?
So I always try to approach things with an open mind, and I always wanna learn and, and, and be fair. And I do approach you this evening not supporting this item. However, when I came to the podium earlier, I was hoping for more detail or to learn something new, or to learn something from our history, which has not occurred as of now. So with that being said, I would, you know, I won't vacillate. I don't support it this evening. I have no malice. I have, um, it just is not right.